Please bear with us as we close, as we finish with our closed session, and then we'll begin with tonight's meeting. May I have a motion to return to open session and approve certificate fifteen sixteen seven for closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Reverend Bailey, seconded by Ms. Ream. Motion, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Reverend Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Kay?
Yes.
Ms. Miller Richards?
Yes.
Ms. Ream?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve our agenda this evening?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Reverend Bailey, seconded by Ms. Holmes. Are there any changes or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have the minutes of our last meeting. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the December seventh, two thousand fifteen regular school board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Reverend Bailey, seconded by Ms. Miller Richards. Are there any questions, changes, or discussion? May I have a vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now go to our favorite part of the meeting tonight, recognitions. We will start with the word of the month, courage, to be presented by Hugh Mercer.
Good evening, board members, Chairman Green, Dr. Melton, families and friends. It is my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Michelle Phillips and ten of her young charges who will be courageously presenting the word of the month, courage. Thank you.
Thank you, friends, family. I've talked to three families up here. I even have my former teachers in the audience. We're here tonight to talk about Fredericksburg City Schools Word of the Month, which is courage. I have a few cue cards. I think the best way for discussing the word courage is to demonstrate courage. What I'm doing right now is recruiting to my students. I'm having to muster up some courage. If you watch closely, you'll probably see me tremble and shake a little bit. You'll hear my voice quiver a little bit. But my first card says, courage is the commitment to begin without any guarantee of success. Who knows what's going to happen tonight in our presentation? I have no idea. People are going to courageously unfold. Courage is not the absence of fear. Clearly, I'm a little uncomfortable here. But it's the ability to act in the presence of fear. It takes nothing to join the crowd. And I ask my students tonight to come together as a crowd. Not a lot of courage to join the crowd, but it takes everything to stand alone. You get in life what you have courage to ask for. And tonight, I ask my students, sometimes all you need is twenty seconds of insane courage. Twenty seconds of embarrassing bravery. And I'm gonna put my glasses on for the first time as a public speaker. Something really wonderful might happen. What if I fall, Mrs. Phillips? What if you fly? I'm now gonna look to my group, and I have asked them to share a moment of courage with you. I have no idea what they're going to say. It's taken a tremendous amount of courage on my part. A tremendous amount of courage on Mrs. Tanger's heart. But I trust them, and they develop courage tonight. Which one of you would like to speak? Thank you, Luke. My team will introduce themselves. You may look that way at this audience, or you may address the school board. It's up to you. That's probably a good shot. Okay? Go ahead.
My name is Mary. My name is Mary. I didn't scare the earth, but I was scared of the earth. I need to help my dad get stuff up in the attic, and he should be scared. And I need courage, you see, to build a little up there, and save things up there, and to make a little more money.
I have some courage standing on the street. I have something, it's just twenty dollars later. Do I have someone else who likes to give courage? Hi? This is surprising, because a lot of these kids are extremely nervous about coming tonight. Go ahead.
I take some encouragement when I'm speaking, but I...
Mary? I have a lot of speakers on. I'm trying to get them to move forward.
My name is Mary, and my story about courage begins with a decision to get in on to mine. I am scared, but I will do it, but I will.
Again, I really don't know what they're gonna share. Could we just grab and say?
(laughter)
I was really scared, because I was a little tight, but I...
My name is Michael, and I'm so well-cured. It is my first year, so I'm glad to see you on my sixth birthday. And I'm glad I took a lot of courage to learn my virtues.
Emma and Adrian, come up. Bill and Curtis, hold on.
My name is Adrian. I want to tell you about courage. My teacher, Miss Ream, gave me a baby this past summer. We had a social teacher first to walk to school. It took courage for Miss Ream to be forgiven, the teacher didn't know. It took courage for Miss Brownie, her social teacher, she didn't know. It took courage for me and the other kids to come to school on the first day, knowing we didn't have the time. The ultimate courage was really from the fact we had a great beginning to our day.
At this time, if I have any other students who wish to make a brief presentation now would be the time to step forward. If you don't wish to speak, you can simply come and stand, because we all recognize that as an act of courage. You can be brave. You can stay in your seat if you want, or you can come up here. It's all right. All right, come on up.
(laughter)
You sound like you're to nothing. Are you different from the work? So you're supporting your friend, right?
Oh.
My name is Addison, and I had trouble when I first played basketball. First in the team, I never did before, but I was scared being that team. But my mom did have courage, and she told me that, you know, that I was a student.
My last speaker and my newest student.
My name is Genesis, and when I was in first grade, and I was in drama class, we were having a play, so we were going to be on stage. And we were playing, and we wanted to be there, and I was really scared, and it was really scary, but it was hard.
So in closing, my last card for ladies, which all says, being deeply loved by someone gives you strength, while loving someone deeply gives you courage. We are all here tonight with someone who deeply cares about us, and we are all here with someone that we deeply care about. Therefore, we have courage to conquer, obviously, the enemy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Phillips, and thank you all her wonderful courageous students. Let's give them another big round of applause. At this time, I'll turn it over to David Baker, who will talk to you on community eligibility program.
Thank you, and good evening. A little over a year ago, we approached the school board with this idea that we would have free food for each kid at the Hugh Mercer Elementary School and Original Walker Grant. That was based on the free and reduced numbers, and it was very successful. It was a lot of work, but the benefits were humongous. Recently, Brian Kiernan and I, he's our food service manager, went to Richmond, and we were recognized as a school division there by both the Commonwealth of Virginia and also by the State Department of Education for our participation in the first year of what's called CEP, or Community Eligibility Programs. It's hard to remember, but we go by CEP. And at this time, we've gotten both certificates that we were awarded, and we're going to present it to the school board, and it's our hope that when Original Walker Grant renovation is done, that we place it somewhere in the lobby there, because that's the school that really triggered our success with this because of the numbers. And so, we want to give this to you, and also thank you for allowing us to participate in that program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
(inaudible).
Thank you. You want to let me?
We gotta go down for bath.
(coughing)
All right. Good evening once again. Want to welcome everyone tonight, and the following students are being recognized from Lafayette for winning the first and second place in our Jingle Bell Jog Fun Run that took place on Tuesday, December fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, before break. Here are our courageous winners. For grade three girls, our second place winner was Sophia Coulon, the daughter of Mr. Whit Coulon, and Mrs. Sonia Coulon. Come on up. In first place, our girls in third grade, the first place winner was, congratulations to Addison Howe, the daughter of Tim Howe, and Lisa Masters. Come on up. McCoy. Give him a round of applause. And our first place third grade boys was McLean Maynard, the son of Mark, and Christie Maynard. I saw McLean here. Come on up. In fourth grade, our girls' second place winner was Aubrey Van Way, the daughter of Jack Aldroyd and Tara Sininsky. And our first place winner was Cecilia Lucas, the daughter of Mark, and Marjorie Lucas. In fourth grade, our boys' second place winner was Avery Forsman, the son of Ed, and Piper Forsman. And our first place winner for fourth grade boys was Nathan Scharf, the son of Brian, and Carrie Scharf. In fifth grade, we'll start with the girls in second place, was Katie Boyd, the daughter of Matthew and Jennifer Boyd. And in first place, for the girls in fifth grade, was Sarah Regal, the daughter of Ricardo and Sarah Regal. In fifth grade, our boys' second place winner was Brian Dudley, the son of Julie Dudley. And lastly, our first place winner in fifth grade for the boys, Jason Stinchcomb, the son of Matthew, and Holly Stinchcomb. Congratulations to all of our winners once again.
Thank you for your many contributions and the courage to show tonight to receive your awards. Thank you for coming. You may leave if you'd like, stay if you want to. (laughter) (inaudible). You made it time, that was fine.
We've got...
You're good. You're charming, you're a part. Thank you. (laughter) See ya. A very important part of our meeting, the hearing of citizens. Ms. Cordell Robinson will speak on behalf of the Fredericksburg Education Association.
Good evening. First of all, I want to acknowledge my colleagues who are here with me as I present this to I really want to thank you for this opportunity to share our concerns relevant to the salary and benefits of all the employees of the Fredericksburg City Public Schools. We continue to be excited as we work to make Fredericksburg City Public Schools among the nation's best. Even as the governor's budget presentation was extremely less than satisfactory or even acceptable, we believe that we have a supporter of you in our educational endeavors and compensation for the tireless workers who give so much to our community. We believe that you will seek to go beyond the measly two percent as presented in the state budget for the last two years. We can and must do better to address this stalemate of low salaries and reductions in school spending. The governor's proposed budget must be viewed in the context of the significant decline in state commitment to our public schools over the past decade. To the detriment of our children, the state's contribution to our students on a per pupil basis is down nearly fifteen percent since two thousand and nine. We now rank a lowly forty-first in the nation on that measure. On another measure of our priorities, we are even worse. The competitiveness of Virginia teacher pay is ranked worst in the nation by the Educational Law Center at Rutgers University. Virginia teacher salaries are almost sixty-eight hundred dollars under the national average. Part of the problem is that our system of funding K through twelve education is flawed. Reductions in school spending have been achieved by making changes in the various formulae which determine how the state supports our schools. The state's formula ignores prevailing practices and expenses at the local level. The one point six billion in cuts the state made to our public schools back in two thousand and nine are permanent unless future enhancement in the state's funding formula are adopted. Even as we continue to experience the challenges of society in general, we care about the education of our children. As educators, we're pleased to participate in a system whose accomplishments are outstanding. Virginia's fourth graders outperform their peers nationwide in reading and mathematics by significant margins. More than nine out of ten Virginia students who entered the ninth grade in the fall of two thousand and eleven earned a diploma within four years, and more than fifty percent graduated with an advanced studies diploma. Student achievements in two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and fifteen on the SOL tests in English, mathematics, history, and science improved significantly. These achievements are noteworthy as the needs of our student population have grown. Since two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight statewide, the number of economically disadvantaged students has risen by thirty-nine percent. The number of students who have limited English proficiency is up to thirty-three percent, and the number of students who are homeless is up to seventy-three percent. Educators have also risen to meet the increasing demands of class sizes, growing diversity, and continuous testing. Clearly, we have to pay to attract and retain high-quality personnel. We beseech our state and city lawmakers to do better with the funds for education. As you work on the budget for two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen school year, we still look to you to evolve the best results possible for our students and their teachers. Equally important are the support professionals, from the cafeteria workers to the bus drivers, who deserve to be a priority in our budgeting process. All employees of the Fredericksburg family deserve fair and decent compensation as we work to produce the best results for the students and the community of Fredericksburg. We need lawmakers who will not cut educational funds, but increase them. As you work to ascertain the best possible budget and convince the city officials of the importance of sound fiscal preparedness for education, we stand firm in our commitment to the students of the Fredericksburg City Public Schools. Moreover, we thank Dr. Melton for his support and commitment to evolve more competitive and rewarding salaries. We took great note of the efforts given us this year and appreciate that Fredericksburg will continue to do so in the coming year. In preparing our students for tomorrow, we will continue to work to bring our students to international standards, continue to seek the best professional development, work harder to improve the dropout rate, and teach lifelong learners who are more than test takers. We ask that you consider a four percent raise for the dedicated and deserving employees of the Fredericksburg School Division. Thank you for the opportunity to express our hope that you will keep our programs strong and reward our workers. Thank you so much.
Thank you for speaking on behalf of Fredericksburg Education Association of Teachers. We now go to the consent agenda, and there are no items on this, so we're gonna go to action items, personnel.
Recommend the board approve the personnel list as revised.
May I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Reverend Bailey, seconded by Ms. Holmes. Roll call vote, please.
Reverend Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Kay?
Yes.
Ms. Miller Richards?
Yes.
And Ream?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. The next action item is the appropriation of prior year-end general operating fund balance.
I recommend that the board formally approve, reserve, and designate the amount of one million, six hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars from the previously unappropriated pre-audit fiscal year two thousand and fifteen estimated general operating fund balance for use in fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, as detailed in the materials provided, and to include the amount of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen special revenues fund balance, also described in the materials provided. Further recommend the school board approach City Council for formal appropriation authority, amending the two thousand and sixteen fiscal year general operating fund and special revenues fund budgets.
May I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Then, a motion by Ms. Miller Richards, seconded by Ms. Ream. Is there any discussion, questions, comments? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next action item is the approval of the contract for construction management services.
Recommend that the board approve the contract between Fredericksburg School Board and Downey and Scott LLC for construction management services for the renovations of Old Walker Grant Building.
May I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Holmes, seconded by Reverend Bailey. Are there any questions, discussion, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Yes.
Everybody seems so...
Yeah, moving on.
Come on.
We're with the construction project.
Yeah, that's, we're supposed to be positive. That was a good news. Information items, instructional presentation, Dr. Thomas.
Madam Chair Green, board members, Dr. Melton, colleagues, guests, good evening. The Commonwealth of Virginia, through the action of the Virginia Board of Education, created the Governor's Early College Scholars Program. This initiative essentially allows high school students to obtain as much as an associate's degree and as little as fifteen credits toward completion of an undergraduate degree. In Fredericksburg, we're very fortunate in that we have entered into an arrangement with German Community College, the Doris Buffett Sunshine Foundation, and our own James Monroe in a designation locally known as the Gladys P. Todd Academy. I'd like to publicly recognize the work that Mrs. Diggs has done here at James Monroe, leading this initiative for our school division. She has worked very effectively, tirelessly, to support our kids who have assembled with us this evening. So momentarily, you will hear from Mrs. Diggs, and you will hear from our students who we are extremely proud of, and they will tell their tale about being a high school student while undertaking collegiate-level studies. Mrs. Diggs.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Chairperson Green, school board members, Superintendent Melton, it is indeed a pleasure to be with you this evening to highlight the James Monroe High School Gladys P. Todd Academy cohort. These students have, to this point, they've already completed one semester of college coursework, and as of this past Friday, they've started semester two. I am just so encouraged by them every day I see them in the commons. They arrive back to JM around eleven, and it's just so, so nice to see what a true family these students have become. We, at James Monroe High School, are very, very proud of them, and at this time, I am going to turn the podium over to Stephanie Catlett. She will introduce the members of the cohort to us this evening, and then she will also introduce our speakers for this evening as well. Thank you so much.
Hello, school board members and members of the society. I'm gonna introduce the students of the Gladys P. Todd Academy, and when I say your names, please stand. names, please stand. Kelsey Byrd. Mayani Gray. Ashley Hodges. Jaden Honaker. Dirk Jones. Tabiyan Morake. Brianna Munson. Adana Murray. Dejeanay Nelson. Yessenia Rodriguez. Sean Simon. Matthew Small. Ahmad Spence. And Kayla Waller. We will now have reflections by Ashley Hodges, Tabiyan Morake, and Yessenia Rodriguez.
Good evening, board members. I'm honored to have the pleasure of speaking with you all tonight. I was told by my assistant principal, Mrs. Diggs, that the objective for tonight was to give you all an overall reflection of our time at being in the Gladys P. Todd Academy. Mrs. Diggs told my peers and myself that we have two and a half minutes to give you all an impression, a good impression of us, a good impression of us. With that being said, I'll start by saying this. My name is Ashley Hodges, and the one thing I'm most recognized for is my academic achievements. Now, I could stand here before you all and list all of my accomplishments that I've gathered over my overall academic journey. In addition, I could go on to tell you what the great opportunities Gladys P. Todd Academy has given to all of us. That is not my goal for tonight. Unfortunately, many of you do not know us beyond our academic abilities. We can't be looked past our GPAs, or the things you may hear from our teachers, or Ms. Diggs herself. To many of you, we are two-dimensional. You do not know us from the roots from which we have blossomed from. So instead of speaking about what I've learned from an academic perspective, I would like to share with you what I've learned on a personal level, something about all of us. Firstly, we have Kelsey Byrd. This young lady is someone who always remained gentle in nature and will always be a good friend of mine. Then we have A.J. Murray. He is the motivator of the group, and he's always there to cheer us on no matter what. Then there's Stephanie Catlett. She's the one who understands all of us due to her incredible interpersonal skills. T.J. Morake is someone I like to think of as an intellectual juggernaut. Dirk Jones holds the mindset of a boss in the making. Sorry. Kayla Waller can make you cry of laughter even on her worst days. Matthew Small is the epitome of a gentleman. As long as he's nearby, I know the door will always be held open for me. Brianna Munson is a pint-sized genius who we can all depend on to ace any math test. Mayani Gray is a heavy thinker, and she only speaks when she is ready to. Dejeanay Nelson is a natural athlete. Sean Simon is a covert, critical thinker. Jaden Honaker is introverted, yet he is clear on his potential. Ahmad Spence is the one who's not afraid to showcase his creativity and passion through his talents. And Yessenia Rodriguez never fails to find a glimpse of sunshine on the gloomiest of days. And then there's me, and together, all of us have fabricated the beginning of the Gladys P. Todd Academy. No matter our GPAs or our test scores, no one, and I mean no one, can take away the ways in which we have grown together. Gladys P. Todd Academy is more than just a cohort of great students. We are a family, one that consists of geniuses, athletes, artists, and the list continues on. Being in Gladys P. Todd Academy has taught me responsibility, values, and the possibilities of prosperity. Without a doubt, years from now, I will remember Gladys P. Todd Academy and this family. With the conclusion of this answer, I hope that you too remember us for not what we are, but who we are. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It has been a pleasure to receive the opportunity to speak in front of the school board today. Being in the Gladys P. Todd Academy has been a big change in my life as a teenager. But first things first, college is completely different from high school. You can feel the difference as soon as you walk into German Community College and James Monroe High School. Another thing, although the professors know that we are current high school students, they treat us like adults in college, and they expect us to think like them as well. They are not constantly reminding us about certain assignments or due dates because they expect us to be responsible for ourselves. Not only this, but we have been able to somehow form a bond among all of us in addition to the professors. We are not just classmates or good friends, we have eventually became a family. By the end of our fall semester, I had to learn how to be responsible for myself, and I had to learn how to prioritize my schoolwork with my after-school activities. My biggest issue was managing my time, especially since I do have a job, as well as some of my classmates. But that does not mean that we are going to find the easy way out and quit our job. I believe that we all just have to keep pushing ourselves to overcome any obstacle on our journey and never give up.
Good evening. Forgive me for my near incapacitation. Hello, school board members and society. I just want to say that the Gladys P. Todd Academy has strengthened all of us as students and as well as friends and as well as a family altogether. And I also want to give thanks to Mrs. Doris Buffett, Mrs. Diggs for all the work she does, Mr. Perry, and another person who I don't think gets as much shine, Mr. Fred German. He's always there whenever he can be there for us. If we're out there on the bus, he's always the person who comes to shake our hand if Mr. Perry can't. I just want to thank everyone for allowing us to have this program be done for us, and I'm just happy to be here. Thank you.
In conclusion, I'm speaking on behalf of all of us. We thank you, we thank everyone for their support, and to wrap up from each person, we are a family, and we've grown to become a family. And we love you guys, and we love each other. Thank you.
We are so very, very proud of you all for being the first to start this program. You're a wonderful example of what anybody can do if they have the will and the desire and the work and the attitude. Good for you. Congratulations.
We love you all, too.
And you're part of a bigger family. We'd also like to recognize Ms. Todd for having the belief in furthering everybody's education. She believed in lifelong learning, so thank you for carrying that forward. We're proud of you. We go to information items, update on original Walker Grant. Oh, financial report, see? Just blown away by you all. Dr. Baker. Mr. Baker. One-day Dr. Baker.
I only wish there was something for CPA.
His reflections and your honesty. I've got some, thank you.
I feel very humbled to follow that. That was pretty amazing. You have before you the November 30th financials, and as you can see, we have a slight positive variance in the revenues, slight positive variance on the projected expenditures. Things are going about as planned. You know, our salaries were staying within our staffing that we started with. We don't have any big surprises, other than utilities are a little less than what we expected because of the weather. And things are going about as planned, which sounds boring, but it's actually good news. I've done this for 15 years, and I love it when it's boring. So if there's any specific questions anyone has after looking this over, even just ask it, I'll try to answer.
Questions or comments?
Boring's good.
Thank you.
And donations are welcome. We go on to now an update of original Walker Grant renovation project, Dr. Gordon.
Good evening, everyone. Do not really have a lot of new information to share with you since our last update that took place in December, but as a reminder, since we are in a new year, we took the time to relocate 27 of our central office administrators from all of our different school buildings into the executive plaza. We also relocated five early childhood special education classes from our original Walker Grant over to Hugh Mercer Elementary School, as well as the remaining Head Start classrooms from one side of the building at OWG to the other. At this point in time, Dr. Melton and I actually met with our architectural firm, Vermosi Architecture Today, as we were officially giving feedback on the design committee members that many of you attended, as well as central office staff and Head Start staff. We will have a follow-up meeting to relay that information to all parties sometime next week. We're waiting to get the confirmation email from First Choice tomorrow. As you all approved in your action items today, we also hired our construction management services with Downey and Scott LLC, which came to us highly recommended by the city. We believe this great partnership will definitely help us to guarantee that the completion of the project will be August 31, 2017. Next month, we hope to be able to tell you all more. Our next step is looking at the asbestos that's in the building and beginning to break ground sometime in February. Do we have any questions? Thank you.
Exciting. Okay, we're going to old business, VSBA Capital Conference, February 10th and 11th, 2016. Do we need two people for that one? Okay, so...
I'll go.
We need two people to keep up our Board of Distinction certification. So, the next one is the VSBA Northeastern Regional Forum, that's March 9, 2016. We don't have anyone registered yet, so please look at your calendars for that one. New business, VSBA Hot Topic Conference is March 16. That's in Withville, CTE and workforce readiness, and we need two for that one.
Withville?
John's Drive. One of the Johns.
I will send someone with you to drive. We'll let him draw straws.
Okay, so we need two for that one.
Dr. Thomas keep dodging that bullet.
I think a good idea would...
Well, I guess that takes us to good in the order. Welcome back to a wonderful new year, and hopefully a good productive year for everyone. We thank you for all that you all do, from the top to the bottom. We love it.
I was just going to say, you know, the word of the month is courage, and that I think all of you all displayed tremendous courage. This is a brand-new program, and you know, you started college, and you're not college-age, so I want to commend your courage, too.
And here's for the courage going into the budget process. Okay, motion for adjournment.
Second.
Moved by Reverend Bailey, seconded by Ms. Holmes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all.